...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting has been posted in all the normal posting places. Do you need a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. A motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Motion carried. On the student showcase.
Sure.
Where would you like us to go?
Right up in front.
Okay. Alright, Mary, let's turn it right on to your Nora.
Alright, so we wanted to highlight a little bit the electives that were offered in the first quarter. We are on to our second quarter one, so. Engineering Olympics is being taught every quarter this year. First quarter, we had thirty-six students in it, a combination of seventh and eighth graders. They got in groups of three and four, they created countries, and they competed in engineering challenges with their countries. And we aligned those to... What the kids got graded on was their engineering design reports, so they showed me how they walked through the engineering design process steps, and then the eight practices that we've been aligning our science curriculum to. So the kids were able to get an A whether they won the Olympics or lost in the Olympics, just while going through the process. And the other class that was taught first quarter is the one that Nora is here to talk about tonight. It's pallet project. That one had twenty-six students in it. We limited it just to our eighth graders this year. We had so many kids interested in it, and we could only offer it first and fourth quarter because they do so much of it outside. And so we limited it just to our eighth graders for this. John Nudashine was our resident expert for the course and offered a huge amount of knowledge and help to our students, as well as getting the shed area set up out there on every other day basis, so that we can go out there and do our work. So Nora's gonna talk you through kind of what our process was. Some of the projects are over here, if you take a look at. And then we have a video at the end that shows some of the pictures of the process and a couple of the kids' reflections on the process. Take your way, Nora.
So, as soon as I want to explain, I'll be talking a little bit about Pallet Project and kind of the steps we took, and everything that it kind of just overview's. So, a couple of my friends and I, we tried, we picked some words that described Pallet Project to us. For the P in pallet, we have plan, A is active, L is leader, L is listen, E is effort, T is teamwork, T is tools, O is obstacles, P is practice, R is respect, O is optimism, J is jobs, E is excellence, C is communicate, and T is together. So, we definitely took a lot of precautions going through this, I guess, class, and you, every day you had to wear closed-toed shoes. You couldn't wear like baby clothing or anything that could get caught anywhere. You must wear gloves when you're handling with the tools, where you're taking apart the boards. And then you had to wear goggles, just so you're not gonna get hurt.
We had zero safety incidents, no injuries on the period.
So, your first step was to take apart the pallets with the group members of your choice. It, I mean, with our group, well, we had a very old pallet, so our boards, they were hard to get off, and like, ours, we got stuck with ones that had a lot of nails in it, but... And then we had custodians, they cut off the two ends. So we had like the middle piece with the longest boards on it, and then the two sides, they had just like some small squares that you had to get off. The tools we were given to take apart these and kind of like build and like construct with it, we got a crowbar, a hammer, a triangle measure, and we got pliers. I would say most kids probably used the hammer and the crowbar. The step two was after you have already taken apart your pallet, you had to plan out what you wanted to make. And you really couldn't plan out what you wanted to make before because you didn't know like the wood that you all had, because you could have had wood that was broken, and you had planned to use every single piece of wood, and if some were broken, or you couldn't use some because they had too many nails in it, then you couldn't use it because you can't nail through, you can't cut through nails that have in it. So you have to definitely kind of just like figure out in the beginning like what you kind of wanna like, kind of wanna build. And then when you get after taking apart your pallets, you really have to like think, this is what I wanna build. There's really no going back after you start. So the third step was before you could like cut your wood, or you could put any nails in it. You had to measure it, you had to build out a plan, you had to graph it on paper, you had to make sure everything was almost, almost perfect. And you just had to make sure that everything was the way you wanted it to be, because you don't wanna cut a piece of, you don't wanna cut a board and then realize you messed it up, because what if you wanna use all the boards that you already have? That means you can't use the boards if it's not, if you cut it the wrong way. So the fourth step was after you made like the lines and the markings and all the measurements on it, you cut, you had the custodians, or even Musa Woski did.
Thanks Nora.
She cut the board, they all helped cut the boards. And then you had to sand it down. Even if you were, even if you were gonna paint, you still had to sand it down just so it's nice and smooth. And most, some kids, they decided not to paint it, or they didn't have enough time to paint it. But the kids who may have made similar projects, or they planned it out more, had time to paint. So the fifth step is to paint the boards of any color, or you can just keep it looking like rustic. Like, it was pretty much your team's choice. Like, it wasn't a requirement to paint it. I think that was really nice, because then you didn't have to like make that choice of what color you wanna paint, if you just wanna kind of just like keep it regular. And the sixth step was by using the nail guns and the screws, we were able to assemble our projects that we planned. Sometimes I had to make adjustments and fix the problems, which our group did a lot of that, because we wanted to make like the little triangles to hold up our shelves, but we realized that it wouldn't work. So we kind of just like figured out, oh, maybe we won't use the triangles at all to hold it. And then we realized that one of our boards snapped. And so we realized that something needed to support under it. But we realized like we had to fix some stuff. And even with the wood, you could use the straps, you could use, if you asked your team to use what they were using. And I know a lot of teams, they, this step was really hard, because they figured out that when they put in the nail in the wrong spot, it might have snapped, or it might have broken off, or something might have not like stayed in place. So it, this was really one of the biggest struggles, like just trying to figure out like, okay, how do I wanna do this now that it's not working the way I wanted it to go the first time?
So part of the group's project was that they had to write directions of how they thought they were going to assemble it. So once they cut all their pieces, they had to write step-by-step instructions on how they thought they were gonna assemble it. And then most of the groups had to go back and modify those after they saw how things really went together. Because sometimes putting a couple of nails through a nail gun isn't gonna hold the seats. So then we had to try to build really a pallet hole, and screwing things together, and making stronger, stronger supports to hold it.
It was a lot of problem solving, especially with our piece. So pretty much a summary of what Pallet Project meant to our group was, in this class, we learned how to cooperate with others, and plan ideas, and make, and then come to life. We did this by helping each other, creating a project, and communicating, creating this big thing. Like, when we do projects like this, we don't usually build the stuff, we just draw it out. And in this class, we actually made it like come to life. Like, it actually could be in our hands, and we could actually do something with it. Like, it's not just a drawn-out piece of paper.
Alright, so a quick video of the session show, breakdown days, some of the workdays, their final projects. And then all of the groups had to do a final reflection on their process and their product. So there's a couple of those in there as well, so you can hear from some other students. Nora did an exceptional job.
Okay, so we built the plane, and the hardest thing to read of the project was figuring out the angles to be five and then making it.
The best part was seeing the final product, and not turn. The most surprising thing we learned was how easy it was to take.
So part of the class we expected, we passed through the project, and we didn't have to pay our expenses, and that should be offered next year.
Okay, so we're in pallet project, me.
Pallet.
Jackson. And we created a shelf, so, you know, it's kind of hard, but we need to like prepare for it. So like, the hardest part was...
The hardest part was probably giving, like, all the nails out of the pallet and stuff, and trying to like, trying to like take apart all the pallet to get this done.
The best part of the whole process was probably just like sampling it, and you know. It started, it was fun, it was like kind of like easy, and you had to play with all like tools, and like figure out how to do all this stuff.
The most surprising part was how easy that new homework, and then they brought forth.
And then like, we probably got like this class, it was gonna be like, probably three or four, like one to ten. And it probably be a little harder, like maybe six or seven. Just go outside, and they do like actually like work.
They're really honest in their reflection.
Yeah. Hope you enjoyed our project?
The hardest part of our project is taking apart a pallet because some of the boards split.
The best part of the project, I would say, is finishing it, because it took over a long thrust to finish.
The most surprising thing that we learned, I learned, was that nail guns need pressure to help it to work.
The class kind of seemed like it was like what I predicted. Like, it was gonna be a fun class, you put together pallets, take them apart. It was a lot of fun, I really enjoyed the class.
Oh, my name is Matthew.
Hi, I'm Mary.
Hi, I'm Brayden. And we are going to talk about our experiences in Pallet Project. So the hardest part in Pallet Project was taking out the nails and staples. This was hard because the nails would always get stuck in our wood, and we used every tool, but we just couldn't get them out. Eventually, we got the big crowbar, and that made things a little bit easier. The staples were also a challenge, because we couldn't figure out how to get underneath the staples. We couldn't find a tool to get underneath, but Mr. Nudashine helped us get all the staples out. But overall, the legs were the hardest part of the job. When the legs were cut, we couldn't get the right measurement down. However, we always remeasured things, we probably remeasured like three or four times. But in the end, we ended up trimming the legs enough to make the legs, all four legs, stand underground. These challenges may have been hard, but our group persevered and overcame all obstacles.
So the best part of Pallet Project is probably the result. We started with a pallet, then we ended up with a juror's pool chair. The chairs turned out better than we expected. The entry process of assembling, the functions, and the run surface of the project, but we figured it out, and we found a way to help it turn out better.
I didn't think that we would have to write directions. This is about as surprising. And I didn't think that we'd do like all the work outside of making the chair and taking apart the pallet. But another thing is, I didn't think this was video, but we had it all cut out good. And, but what I, what was most surprising was that I didn't think it would take so long to put together the thing. Like, I got really discouraged, I did like six times, and a long class, you do it, and yeah.
Okay, what do you compare to what I thought? I thought this class was gonna be easier than what it actually was. I thought everyone was gonna be given, wooden was already cut, we just had to nail them, make them come together. I also thought we weren't going to be put into groups. I didn't expect taking apart a pallet to be such a big part of the class, and expect us to be inside too much of fear either. And that would take much time to finish our project, our final project. In conclusion, this class was pretty fun for all of us. We think that we should continue to offer these classes because they're all a lot of fun.
And this is our chair right here. We consider it like a chair you would use by the beach and by the pool. So yeah, thank you for watching.
Any questions for Nora, or for me, about Pallet Project, or any of our projects? So this one was a sled, they're gonna put an old set of skis on the bottom and try to ride like a toboggan. This one is a swing, they're gonna hang up. That's Nora's shelf, that's the triplane, and then a bench, and then we saw the chair. A shelf. There was another chair and another shelf. The kids had taken home.
So what about your triangle braces for your shelves didn't work? You said that didn't work.
They ended up being like too small, and like, we couldn't figure out the right cuts, because we couldn't, because then we couldn't figure out how to nail them, because if you nailed them from the front, it didn't reach all the way through. And if you nailed them to the back, it wasn't long enough. And we just couldn't find the right nail, so we decided to go with just a longer piece of wood that we can nail in from the top of the shelf and through the back, which seemed to work a lot easier.
How much, how much prep did you have to do to actually come up with your, with your design?
That, it was a lot. Like, I would say the most of the time was spent just like working on it. Like, I would say like three or four of the classes was building it together, and the rest of the days were either our first project that we did, which was making something out of popsicle sticks, and the other days, like, I would say we were just planning it out, having to write directions. Like, that was at least with my group, because a lot of times, we couldn't build stuff, because we didn't have everything that we could use to put it together at that time. So we had to figure out what we wanted to do with the time we had, which definitely it was a lot more planning than building.
Was it easy to come up with the design? Given three or four of the kids?
Well, my, my group, they kind of made, I wasn't there on the first day where we decided to build what we wanted to. So I didn't know what we were building until the next day of class. So I don't really know how the process went with it. I think they kind of just wanted to build something easier, so like, I wanted to try and build something different. Like, I wanted to go to chair, but my group, they didn't want to go to shelf, so I kind of just was like, okay, yeah, we can build a shelf. And I do like how it turned out though.
I think overall, the kids impressed me. I had, when I could talk to John about the class, I was like, we're gonna get a lot of boxes, mailboxes, flower boxes, birdhouses, like a lot of just square things. And I remember the first day of design, when the kids was like, we're gonna build a triplane. And I was like, I don't even know like what you're thinking right now. But it was their class, and they had pictures, and suddenly they had a sketch, and they did a cool drawing to show me how it went together. And then when it was said and done, I mean, it was rolling wheels and a spinning propeller. And the kids definitely had a bigger vision for what their project could be than I did. So who decides who keeps the final project, or?
That's up to the group. Nobody, well, Lauren, she wanted to take the project, but then she gave it away to another kid in her class, which I'm okay with that, but I kind of think it's like defeating the purpose, because they made their own project, and like, we made this, so I think one of us should have taken it home. But it was her choice, she did, she was the one who picked to take it home.
Now a single group asked me to solve that problem for them. I think by the end of the, I was like anticipating having to be the, the person to figure that out, and now a single group came to me to be like, who is to take this home? So they all figured it out on their own.
What's the, one piece of advice you'd have for, maybe next year for the, for the classroom, if they do this?
I would say like, don't give up if something doesn't work, and plan more than you build. Like, if you're gonna give up anyway, you're gonna find that it's gonna be way harder to make stuff and succeed in the class, it's just not gonna be fun if you kind of just give up because something didn't work. Like, our triangle things didn't work, and our original shelf idea didn't even come out to be what it looks like. And we, I don't think, I really never thought that we couldn't do it, even if we had to build something different. Like, I think just like, keep trying, and it'll turn out. It might not be turn out how you want it, but it'll turn out like something that you like.
It was interesting to watch them, because I think some, it was the first time that some of them picked up a hammer, a crowbar, and one of them I looked at and said, these late country kids are soft. And she's like, what does that mean, Mr. Russ? I said, go home and ask your dad. The next day she comes back, that means we're weak, and we're just kind of little whips around here. They, they had trouble pulling the pallet apart. So we had to show them a little bit, a little bit of elbow grease and a little bit of effort.
Hey, those pallets probably weigh as much as I did.
You gotta use science to solve that, use levers.
Levers and leverage, and that's right. We gave the best tools we could, but ultimately, you need a little bit of muscle behind it too, so.
I knew we were on a good track when we were out there the first day, and it was hot. And they're wearing their science goggles, and their goggles are fogging up, and they're like dripping sweat.
The first day was the worst.
And a single kid complained, like, I was ready for that, it's so hot, can we go inside? Everybody was just so determined to like get their pallets broken down.
Because we kind of got like a time schedule that you kind of like told us, like, you gotta get this done, otherwise you're not gonna have time to finish, or if you wanna paint it. So we were like, okay, we gotta get this done. Our group definitely struggled with that, because our pallet was so hard to take off, like, I, it got so hot today, and I was wearing pants, and I was, I just did not like it. Like, I couldn't see out of my goggles half the time. And then we tried to wipe it off, it just got worse, like, there was nothing to do except trying to see, did little holes of fog, and rip off some boards.
Well, thank you, Nora. Thank you, Mr. Evans. Thank you, Mr. Evans. So thank you. Alright. Thanks again, Nora, for coming.
Yep.
You need a ride home, Nora?
No, my dad's coming.
Alright. Need a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from Monday, October 24th, 2016, at 7:30 PM, open session. And then Thursday, November 10th, 2016, at 7 PM, open closed session.
We have a motion in a second, for any additions or corrections. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say aye. Motion carried. Onto the administrative report, and Bill?
I'll make a motion to approve direct deposit number 00005536651 through 0000553652, for a hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-five cents. 900042636 through 900042744, for a hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-eight cents. Direct deposit 00553653 through 000553654, for eighty-three dollars and eleven cents. Direct deposit 900042745 through 900042851, for a hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars and ninety-two cents. Wire number 201600246 through 201600283, for seventy thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixteen cents. And then check number 51760 through 51821, for two hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-five cents. Credit card transactions 1020 through 1020, for sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars and forty-four cents. ACH direct deposit number 161700039 through 161700050, for one thousand, one hundred and seven dollars.
I'll second.
A motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say aye. Motion carried. No one's signed up to speak, so we're onto the district's administrative's report.
Sure. No donations this month, right, Sarah?
Nope.
We will, we'll have some for, for next month, for sure. We have two personnel actions that are actually, for a total, that we'd like to bring to the board. At our last closed session, we discussed basically the Fair Labor Standards Act of an executive order raising the minimum level of salary for, or for types of employees throughout the country. Late last week, a federal judge in Texas, there were twenty-one states, Wisconsin was one of them, and they appealed the executive order, and the federal judge put a halt to that executive order. Back on the closed session, we did make a formal action item based on the information that we had at the time on Stephanie Jankort, Melissa Smith, and Barb Emmerich, basically notifying them that there will be a change in their letter of appointment. Tonight, I bring to you two opportunities and two options. One is to keep them as a salaried employee, a letter of appointment that includes a salary, the remaining balance of their salary, which was approved back in, would be mine for begin of July 1st, or to continue moving forward per the executive order, for instance, and making them an hourly employee. The recommendations that we're getting from multiple different legal interpretations of this is to stay the course if you choose to. But there is no hurrying right now to change them from a salaried employee to an hourly at this time, because they are, all three of the ladies are above the threshold of the minimum set forward on the, the prior to the Fair Labor Standards Act. So I just wanted to throw it to the board about a discussion. I do believe the intent in the closed session was possibly to keep them as a salaried at this time. And if that is the case, I'm just looking for a motion from the board to approve the letters of appointment for Barb Emmerich, Melissa Smith, Stephanie Jankort, to remain their letter of appointment to represent a salaried wage instead of an hourly wage. Or you can make a motion that is an hourly, so.
Should I make a motion to make this salaried?
Sure.
I'll make a motion to approve the letters of appointment for Stephanie Jankort, Barb Emmerich, and Melissa Smith to remain as salaried employees.
Correct.
I'll second the motion.
Motion in a second, is there any discussion?
Did any of the, Stephanie or anyone give you any comments on Stephanie, Barb?
No, the, the comments I got, I think, from Stephanie was as well, you know, just keep it the same then, and I mean, it's, it really doesn't affect anything.
I mean, it's designed to be compensation neutral, right?
It is compensation neutral, there was really no opportunity for an increased compensation, or the opportunity for increase at all there too as well.
It seemed to make sense to split it to salaries, but...
Correct. That would be the administrative recommendation as well. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Motion carried.
Do we have to update that in the minutes for next time, or?
No, because the minutes, basically, the last time, we, we just notified them that their current letter of appointment was going to be terminated, effective December 1st. So this basically keeps, basically as of Thursday, they just will remain salaried employees, but we had to issue them a new letter of appointment, because we redacted the old one last year. The other personnel action, bringing unfortunately, is a letter of resignation for Sarah Pierre, our business manager. Sarah has accepted, accepted the position as Executive Director of Financial Services for the McQuan-Thingsville School District. Sarah has given us, I should have, has given us her liquidity and damages to fulfill her end of her contract. So the administration is looking for a motion from the board to approve the letter of resignation from Sarah Pierre, our business manager. And we thank Sarah for her fourteen months of service. You don't get a gold plash for that, sorry.
What happens if we decline?
Basically, we have no, she has fulfilled her contractual obligation, and I guess it's, we can decide not to, but... There's not, there's not much we can do to stop it, so unfortunately, no.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the letter of resignation of Sarah Pierre, Business Manager. I'll second.
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Alright, um, for information, I wanted to finally, this is our first board meeting where the Forward Exam Scores, which is basically the newest state assessment, which is anticipated to roll forward this upcoming year too as well. Um, and as part of a second attachment, I can showcase this too as well, some of our members of the audience if you'd like, cause these weren't attached as well. Basically what you will find is our Forward Exam Scores, basically what we've done as a district, we've done the best we can to take a look at what those Forward Exam Scores mean. Um, obviously you, what you see on, on that piece of paper basically is a summary, a very, very high level summary of the advanced and proficient students who we have in the Merton Community School District, given basically mathematics and the reading language arts component. As a school, as a staff, and Mike and Jay will talk a little bit later about some things, but we have spent significant time before school in diagnosing and taking a look and taking apart, looking for themes and things, but we also found that the state did not give us a ton of information to really take a look at what content areas, particularly any areas in the areas of reading or mathematics, listening, writing, that we should be focusing in on because we were not given a, an analysis, we were just given a cut proficiency score. So, and we take a look at the different areas and the different standards in which our kids were assessed, we were very consistent right over, covering around, right around the proficiency level that you see in front of you. So, um, Forward Exam Scores, again, taking a look at them, but then ultimately we have created some school improvement plans around trying to increase those achievement levels. We have obviously multiple other indicators, this is just one indicator of how a child does. Uh, we have obviously very localized, uh, unit assessments, we've got, we use some MAP assessments, we use, uh, F and P, just to kinda name a few, uh, to go along with those unit, unit assessments too as well.
Did we get grade level, uh, reports out from that?
Yes, we do.
Are we more or less consistent throughout the grades?
Um, no, it's interesting because like our fourth grade, um, was like right around eighty-five percent proficient and we had a few grade levels, or one or two grade levels that were like forty-eight, forty-nine percent proficient too as well, so.
And then does that, do those deltas at all track with the other indicators we have?
It's, no, there is no real correlation because the, the, the fourth grade levels, for instance, um, the Forward Scores were the highest, yet they have the least amount of proficiency according to AC, or according to MAP, on the MAP scores, and maybe their F and P levels weren't as high as maybe the fifth or sixth graders too as well. So we really didn't see a strong correlation, grade level wise with a lot of that, but when we took a look at, uh, what we tried to do is make some correlations to some of other, some of those other main assessments, you know, MAP for instance, and we found that if you were proficient in, on the Forward Literacy or Mathematics, um, chances are you had about a seventy-five percent chance that you were proficient in MAP. What we describe as proficiency as getting a 24 or higher projected on your ACT. So that's what we kind of used as our proficiency indicator for MAP. For F and P, we, we looked at those benchmarks as in what we would consider grade level at the end of the year and, um, found right around that sixty-five, seventy percent correlation. I mean, we've had kids who scored proficient, say in fourth grade, that were not reading proficiency and according to us on F and P. So it was really, not a really strong tie together, but, uh, we, we did take a look at some of the things and focused on F and P and MAP because those are kind of our standardized assessments, to really try to focus in and narrow in on that. Um, as well as kind of in globally, really narrowing down some essential skill work in the area of literacy in particular, especially in the area of reading, uh, at this point to really point out the three to five most essential things and assessing that multiple times along the way in a unit and looking for that unit progression all the way from September all the way to June too as well. So, um, we're tracking, we have a lot more data on kids right now we're tracking and when our teams meet, for instance, fourth grade just met today, they pulled apart their next unit and identified the four to five essential skills that they are really gonna be counting on kids, uh, about making sure that they are at that proficiency level, uh, as where we want them to be there too as well. So, um, Jay and Michael talked a little bit more about that and we start talking about school improvement plans and stuff like that as well. And, uh, the other piece too is, is you will see that there is a, um, you know, with some of the other indicators, we did very well in Waukesha County, we were the fifth ranked, fifth or sixth ranked, uh, mathematics school in Waukesha County, as well as we were right around ninth out of, I think there's about seventeen or eighteen Waukesha County schools, I think. I'm not sure how many they have there. Sixteen approximately, so, um, the great part about that is, is we've got some great education in southeast Wisconsin, in particular in Waukesha County, but we're gonna continue to try to work our way up and obviously our goal is to increase the level of proficiency of our kids across the board regardless of grade and subject in grades three through eight. The other piece that you'll find too is the school district report cards came out and, uh, those were released a couple of weeks ago, but, uh, Merton Community School District did, did very well, again, according to what DPI has shown, is we are significantly exceeding expectations, um, in, in the area of, uh, the report card. And that takes a look at achievement as well as growth, as well as closing achievement gaps, as well as a couple of other different measures, and I've given the board the details of those, those can all be found online as well, uh, as you take a look at that too. So, the other is I did share with you guys the, uh, the scores of the other Waukesha County School District and just to kinda see how we measured up to those guys. Across the state, you're not gonna find a region that has stronger schools than what, what we have around us, but, uh, I shared that with you guys because that is basically our competitors and who we look at when, uh, we're, we're fighting for families for and things like that too as well. Um, obviously we know that a score doesn't tell the entire story, uh, we've got wonderful relationships with our kids and with our families, but we also know that the report card and the Forward Scores are the most public things that we do everywhere, so that's kind of, before you can tell a message, you need people to get through the door and that's why we continue to focus on that continuous improvement model to really start to raise those levels of achievement, continue to have our kids, uh, achieve at high levels too as well. So, um, we will be getting some first quarter Arrowhead information too pretty quickly to see how our kids did going from eighth grade to ninth grade too as well. Randy, you have a question?
Yeah, do you know why these scores don't tie to the Forward Scores here?
Nope.
Okay.
Um, when you take a look at, there's, there's a whole bunch of statistics and there's value added with your socioeconomic status.
Yeah, but I mean, the, this part of the graph here is supposed to be your state proficiency scores on language arts and mathematics, which should tie directly to our.
Could be a three-year rolling average too as well. They might, they might, uh, I think they probably, they, they do take a look at some averages as well. I think that's probably where, um, we, we get that from. So they're not tied directly, but it does say fifteen, sixteen, so, uh, that's a really good question.
The other thing I wondered about is, is it possible to get a score seg- segmented into the K four and the five through eight? Because if you look at this, it seems like we have a huge gap, you know, our, we're, we're doing very well in the primary with a huge gap versus the state average, like in, um, language arts where it's seventy-seven point four and the state score is forty-two point four. So we've got a thirty, thirty-five percent gap there, which is awesome. And then when you look at the, the intermediate school, we're down to a seven point seven gap. But this is comparing against K through twelve, right? And we know that scores come down as kids age. If so, it's, you know, you expect that a K through four should have, should have higher scores than an intermediate, than high school, but if we're not comparing.
Are there that many K fours in the state though?
No, we're looking at all those, it's, that's where it gets a little different, you know, when we take a look at the proficiency rate, I do believe.
So they're all forty-two point four?
Yeah, they're all.
They're all forty-two point four?
Okay, they're all the same. Um, yeah, cause then you have the proficiency gap there too as well. It's, it's a good question on that, uh, I mean, we can break it down per, I mean, you can take a look at the state, for instance, we do have, kind of feel, going back to your question, when we take a look at the individual grade levels, you know, for third grade, there's a third grade average and there was the Merton average. So, we do have that information that I can share with you guys and I, that's, I can share that with you guys, cause that's really easy, I already have that at the table. I can share that with you.
Cause then we can see whether our gaps are consistent or whether we're.
It, it, it kinda jumps a little bit because the state is consistently right around that forty-two, you know, right around that forty, forty-two. I mean, we had some at sixty, we had some at eighty-four, we had some at forty-eight, fifty-two. So that's what we're really trying to do, Randy, is obviously we know, like you said, it's not gonna, we're not gonna continue the exponential growth, obviously, um, kids begin to hit walls, but ultimately the test starts to get scored a little bit different. And what we're finding too is, is that depending on the group of people who said, oh, here's the proficiency scores for third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, and sixth grade, that proficiency cut score is not consistent either. So I think the state is taking a look at and saying, hey, how do we make this make more sense and how do we make it more linear instead of this, this up and down as well to try to make sure things get leveled off a little bit more too, but, um, I can share with you guys the individual grade levels and how they compare to the state as well. I've already got that information pulled in, we've shared that with our staff as well. So, but overall, I'm, I'm super proud of what we're doing as a staff and, and what we've done and how we continue to, to respond to some of the data. Um, we know that, uh, we've got the toughest competition in southeast Wisconsin, but, or actually in the state, but, uh, we're here to continue that, that rise of the achievement indicators, so, and, uh, and you'll hear a little bit more about that in a second too from our principals. Okay? And if you have state report card questions, I can continue to try to gather those information as we, as we put those forward too as well, so. Um, alright, Mary, quick little update on December.
December. It's coming.
It's coming.
It's coming.
You can hear it coming. I started my presentation.
Did you feel excellent? Would you like one? Would you like one?
Alright, so December, December, um, came about, because our code, which is this international celebration of coding, um, is the week of the, fifth through the ninth, so we started looking at how we could do coding in our classrooms. It's not directly part of our science curriculum overall, we don't have a set, um, computer science curriculum, and so we started looking at how could we do something that week of the fifth through the ninth. And looking at that, it became evident was that it would be important to have our students connected with people who are actually in this field and doing this in the real world, considering most of our teachers don't have the background to be teaching coding or showing kids how coding is used in the real world. So we started looking for people to come in to talk about their jobs in coding and how many places it's now used in the world. Um, from that grew the celebration of December. Um, at the primary school, you can see on the calendar in the current packet, um, they have December 1st, which is Thursday, the STEAM museum is coming. The STEAM museum, the best way to describe it is like Discover World comes to your school. So they bring, um, thousands of dollars worth of equipment that we couldn't otherwise have. A robot that I've been told I can't have is coming on Thursday. Uh, I'm so excited for it. Um, and so they bring basically a, a hands-on, um, interactive museum quality exhibit to our students. Um, all of our students, fourth K to fourth grade, will spend forty minutes in the STEAM museum on Thursday. Uh, we have parent volunteers coming in to help run it and then the company brings all of the equipment to set that up. Um, and then your packet goes through what the different stations will be at, um, that event.
And that's sponsored by STEAM, by company?
Um, we applied for a grant for it.
No, I mean, is it, is that, is that, is it STEAM company?
Uh, the company's called Mobile Ed Productions and so they have a lot of mobile exhibits like that. The STEAM museum is a lot of them. They also do, um, big inflatable globes that they bring to school and traveling planetariums and so their company is all those types of big educational productions, um, that travel from school to school. And then December 5th through the 9th is our code. All of our classrooms will be spending about two days doing coding during math class. Um, I've prepared kits for all of our teachers, kindergartners or eighth grade, that will allow them to basically use a power for a book presentation that I prepared and then they have activities to go along with that. K two, all of the activities are what's called unplugged coding and so it's actually not dependent on students having devices in their hands, cause we're not one to one at those grade levels. Um, and so the unplugged coding will teach the kids kind of the logic of coding. At kindergarten, for example, um, they use maps and they're just trying to get the animal to the correct food to eat and then the correct house to live in. And so they use arrows to say that the animal would have to move right five times and up, um, twice to get to the correct food and the correct, um, place to live. I met with each of the teens, because for fourth grade, they have a tomorrow, um, to hand out their kits. They're really excited to have something kind of prepared for them. We've tried to do our code in the past, um, and there's a lot of resources out there that the teachers have been a little overwhelmed by, what do we do? There's so much out here, um, that they were feeling overwhelmed and again, it goes back to our teachers weren't trained to code, and so they're being told they have to teach something that they weren't trained to do, isn't it? So they've been very receptive to, here's a kit, here's your lessons, here's what you're gonna do, um, and they're excited to share that with the students and I think the students will be excited to, uh, try something different and get exposed to, that's like favorite word of the day, you know, so I use exposure. Um, expose our students to our different things that we wouldn't otherwise include in our curriculum. And then the 14th, um, is the big day here at the intermediate school. We have, um, twenty-one different speakers coming in for our students. They'll have four sessions to go through in the morning, so our kids fifth through eighth grade will pick, um, four speakers to go through. We have coders, we have software engineers, we have a variety of types of, um, engineers, we have welders, we have digital photographers, um, people in finance. We try to really look at STEM overall and think, what are people who are interested in science, technology, engineering, or math going into in the world, um, to show our kids a wide array of opportunities they have, if those are strengths of theirs or if those are things that they'd like to do. So in the morning, our, uh, fifth through eighth graders will pick four of those speakers to go to. In the afternoon, they'll pick two STEM challenges that are out in the new packet, um, which are hands-on things that they'll build and do some, um, engineering design process. And then the afternoon, each of our grade levels, kindergarten through fourth grade, will see two current speakers, um, for the most part. They have one person who works in like computers, computer coding, and then somebody that does something else in their STEM. And that'll be December. December. It'll be a good one. So I welcome you to any of it that you wanna come see or participate in, there's some really cool things coming on the 14th. Ron and I went, um, to accompany the discussion, I do, in marketing simulator, so we have a welding simulator coming where this is a virtual reality type headset and they can, uh, weld and explore them. We have a simulator coming where they get to drive big equipment like cranes and bulldozers. Uh, there's this equipment coming that, that will be project models into the classroom with goggles and it's like a heart exploding out there and you can accept it, um, floating the space, there's some really cool things for us to see. And all the people coming on the 14th have donated their time or donated the equipment to bring, like welding students have some, come to you.
It's an awful lot, so if you are interested in coming, uh, we welcome you and just let me know because we do have a form, I'll need to post that, which is just fine. So, um, I think Phil, you're being, you're one of the speakers, aren't you?
I am, yeah.
So.
For better or for worse.
But we're very excited about the opportunity, not only to kind of continue to enrich, uh, the students' ideas, but ultimately give them an opportunity to understand what else is out there in, in other fields, for instance, like welding or something that they may not be able to do, but is in great demand for, for our common certain needs. So, thank you, Mary, for all of your work you put, put into this and, uh, I think that's been well appreciated.
It's gonna be fun.
It's gonna be fun. Thank you, Mary.
Okay.
Finance committee this week, for the facility committee?
Yep.
So, uh, we've had, oh, it would've been a couple of times since the last, uh, last, last board meeting and, uh, what you have is, uh, in your board packet, is basically a highlighted list of some of the projects that the, uh, the finance committee is recommending that the district pursue. So, um, everybody's got the list here, uh, for sure, but I guess the one thing that right now is it is immediately, if we wanted to, and is a recommendation from the facility team, is to purchase a new piece of equipment, personal regable, multi-purpose vehicle for the district to use on a day in and day out basis. So, and we'll be asking, uh, for a formal action a little bit later, that's the rule of the board, but just wanted to give the board, the community, an update on what, uh, the administration now is working on in soliciting bids and moving forward. What you see on the list again is basically high professional estimates. Right now, John and Jim Vini, uh, are basically out now soliciting bids, gathering information. Right now, John and Jim Vinnie are basically out now soliciting bids, gathering information, creating RFPs to making sure that we try to get an apples-to-apples comparison on all of these items too as well. So, and you can see that in all of the shaded areas, if we move forward with it, it is a, you know, proposed of about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which we would be able to handle through our surplus from last year and bringing down our fund balance from like right around twenty-six percent, right around to that twenty-one, twenty-two, which will be more in line with the board policy for recommendations. So more to come, and we will be continuing to update the facility team and then ultimately bringing bids as, as early as December too as well, so we can get on people's calendars too. But we'll continue to bring those to the board as those combine and come together. So just wanted to give the board a heads up about what we're doing. Okay? And that's it. Randy, anything else from the facility side?
No.
No, no, just that, you know, they are not firm under yet. To stay at the, um, fund balance neutral, we would have to be at like three-seventy? No. Oh, fund balance neutral?
Right.
Yes, yes, that wouldn't increase our fund balance at all if we just stayed at one-seventy. But if we wanted to bring it down, because right now our fund balance is without the one-seventy, right around the twenty-six percent, Sarah?
Yeah, around twenty-six percent.
Right. So the administration is recommending the, the board consider using at least two hundred additional dollars to make it at least a total of three hundred and seventy. So we'll see whether all the projects come in and the facility team can begin to kind of rank those and then bring those to the board for recommendation. All right, so we've got, that's well up kids. All right. Guys, want us to move over here?
Sure.
So we're not gonna douse you with footwork or anything like that, but I think one thing I'd like to speak about is, I'm gonna probably invite, I won't invite Nora, speak to our four K through fourth graders about mindset. Carol Dweck and Jake can talk about her, but there's quite a movement afoot about the mindset of children and their ability to say, yes, I can do it. Many times we've heard conferences where a parent says, you know what, they're, they're not good at math. I was never good at math. The bar was just set. I never liked to read either. The bar was set. So what we're talking about is more than, the primary schools talking about the whole child and the growth of the whole child. So when we're talking about December, and kids realizing, no, I, I could do that, that mindset can make a big difference in how kids perform on tests that are very unrelated to an event like December. So kind of keep that in mind as we go through this. Of course, we're very concerned about accountability and how kids perform. We're also very concerned about the whole child. Okay? So, go ahead, sir. Our team met three times, and I want to say the first, and Rachel and I was there, is on the team. The first meeting, we talked about what brought you into education. And I'll say that around the table, I was absolutely thrilled by the depth of the answers. So this was not an exercise of, let's just get this done, let's get it over with, and on we go. The mindset of the people on that committee is terrific. Thrilled to work with them. You know there are meetings that you don't look forward to? There are meetings, this is a meeting that I really look forward to hearing people talk. So this is what we came up with. Don Bogdaner, like to go on record, saying terrific with her ability to bring data together and have it make sense rather than just a chart full of scores. So we derive these from an examination of the kids' RIT scores over time. Now the, now without getting into the psychometrics of scoring and statistics, the average, the standard deviation is usually three points on either side of the score. And as in special education, we call it the confidence interval, that how many times you give a test, the kids will score there. So we're looking for kids to grow, seventy percent of the kids to grow, or exceed their RIT score. Now this, now if you could go to the next.
I can.
Without getting into a lot of depth, a RIT, and I'll just, the first part, grade two assessment changes. Because the kids do not listen to the test anymore, they have to read it. And that makes a big difference because, as you know, kids can understand a lot more of what they hear than what they read. So the changes in scores for second grade can make a difference in how we take a look at kids' growth. But a RIT scale tells us those five things. If you'd like to make an appointment with me and go through these in more depth, I'd be happy to do that with you. But for time's sake, these are the things that we look at when we look at RIT scores. So kids will score, say, one-seventy to two-hundred, say, one-seventy to one-ninety in first grade. Then that score goes up as they go through school. Jay's score might be here, and then his anticipated growth might be twelve points. We're talking about Jay would like to get to twelve or beyond. But if Jay gets ten points, he hasn't met that RIT goal, but he's grown. So we're talking about that kind of growth throughout, so. The RIT goes after those, those very, those, those scales. Okay? And then these are the recommendations from the team. Now, I was very proud of the team that they said, you know what? To be consistent, five K through eighth grade, we need to give the MAP test. Because we weren't giving the MAP test in five K in first grade because it was more of a listening assessment. And we also have the reliability of the F and P and the PALS. Well, PALS is gone, so now we're going, okay, we're gonna do MAP, five K through eighth grade. So when you're talking about, Randy, when you said, what do these scores mean, how do they fit, and how do they correlate? We can get some longitudinal information as the kids score over time. And that's what that should show us. So I was really pleased when the five K teacher said, well, let's just do it for the sake of the big picture, and for the district that large, let's do that. And the team wrote that recommendation.
One comment about the MAP scores, we did see the strongest correlation to all that we assess, the standardized part, was the MAP score versus the FORWARD. So because we don't have practice FORWARD exams, or we don't, cannot dissect the FORWARD exam to what we really would like it to be done, it seems like Mike's team, I know Mike's team decided to go with the highest correlation, attempt to say, hey, there was a strong correlation between MAP and the FORWARD achievement, and let's try to focus in on that because that's the closest thing we have that can hopefully help dictate that. And kind of going back to what Mike was saying, I know Jay's leading a, a, the growth versus achievement. Growth and achievement are two different things. We know that what we focus in on is growth. The FORWARD is, FORWARD is an achievement test. Can you or can't you? And our goal is to grow kids because then hopefully that's growing them closer to that proficiency level. So that's kind of the, some rationale behind a little bit, kind of the bigger picture with why MAP and why FORWARD make a decent partnership.
If you happen to, you know, if you want to come in and go over this, why don't you tell me how to?
The, the other piece, and I'm sure, actually, Jay, you can go ahead and I'll talk about some of the other stuff that's a little bit more.
You can take your own my slide.
No, go ahead.
So if you, if you take a look at what Mike had put together with his team and what we put together with our team, and Mary happened to be on our team, we have fourteen members of the team. And very similarly to Mike, when I started out, I didn't ask them why they wanted, why they got into education. I said, why are you here? Why are you part of the school improvement plan team? And it was, well, Mary was there. It's, it's one of those things where you sit there and you go, oh, this is not just to look at data, this is what are we gonna do to make our school better? That's really the whole emphasis behind all of our discussions. We met three or four different times as well. And what you look at here is, reading and math are gonna look very similar other than the percentage of students that are going to be meeting there. Sixty-fifth percentile is what we would call the average, high-average range, and that's where we want kids to be. So we have a number of students who are above, a number of students who are below. The first one talks about those kids who are already at the sixty-fifth percentile. We want sixty percent of them to be able to meet or exceed their end-of-the-year MAP goal. When you look at the, the difference between the primary school and our school, primary school, the number of points you can gain on a MAP score is much bigger in the primary school by grade level than it is in the intermediate school. We also test our kids, well, we have been testing our kids more than what the primary school has been testing. So sometimes there's a little bit of that test fatigue that occurs as well. So we've talked about mindset. Here's the, the MAP score. It's the same words except I changed math and we're gonna get the percent that happens to go there. The second one is those students who are below the sixty-fifth percentile, we need to have them exceed their expected, expected growth. Otherwise, that gap is gonna continue to grow. Okay? So we're able to know who those kids are. We have RTI in place for our students in math. Because of our, the length of time we have with math, RTI actually occurs within the classroom. For reading, we have RTI outside in fifth and sixth grade. In seventh and eighth grade, almost all of our students who are significantly below where they should be in maps or in F and P are in a literacy class instead of being in Spanish. So they're receiving extra, extra support there. Plus, if you came in to watch our language arts classes, fifth through eighth grade, and the same is true over in, in, at the primary school, the number of times you watch teachers confer with kids is mind-boggling. Because you can walk in and it's not, the teachers aren't sitting at their desks, they're not sitting at a table. But if they are sitting at tables, because there's three kids around them, they're talking to them. So they're providing as much support as possible in those venues as well. Here is where we came up with the reason for our, our goals, the intermediate school goals. Once Eric, if you look, I'm not gonna click on the link that's found here. You can see historical data just from the last two years of what, what MAP happens to show us. Fifty-one percent of our students' metrics indicate their projected growth are rating fifty-eight percent in math. And then if you look over the fall, results just to our current fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grades here at the intermediate school, thirty-seven percent of our students were below the sixty-fifth percentile. Those are the ones we have to have our focus on, twenty-one percent below in, in math. And as, as Mike said, if there are, if you wanna come in and talk about that information, I'd be happy to. You're welcome to join our school improvement plan team as we sit down and figure out what our next steps happen to be. And then, Mike, I'll let you talk about this because I don't know what that sixth word is, but you probably do.
What we'll do is, we're gonna give winter MAP assessments. So we'll take a look at those MAP scores as a team, and then we'll report back to you in February and say, do we need to adjust them up? These are SMART goals. SMART goals are specific, measurable, attainable, reliable, reliable, and time-based. So we will come back after examining those and report to you and let, this, these are the most current results, and this is what we're gonna, this is what we're gonna do as a result. Okay? Makes sense? So we're not just gonna let you hang until June. We're gonna come back and take a look, much like the goals we have for effective educators. You have a mid-year correction. How are things going? Bring in more data, take a look at things, and that's what this will be. A mid-year review. Okay?
In the meantime, from a grade level and from an individual teacher's standpoint, especially in the area of literacy, we, like we were talking about before, we have established essential skills for each unit. And the literacy specialists and the, the coaches are working with each team as well as individual teachers to set goals for kids and for achievement as well as growth as well. So we've got some intermediary, intermediaries things going on instead of, that's from a, a more grade level and a teacher level. Mike and Jay from the school improvement side wanted to bring everybody together and rally around a common goal. And I know Jay in particular, because you've got more departmentalized, I know their next steps are to really start to focus on the non-literacy and math folks and say, okay, how are you gonna tie yourself to this, this whole school improvement goal of increasing MAP achievement and MAP growth? So lots of other things, and we'd love to sit down with, with anybody if they want to, either with Mike or Jay or separately of us, and talk a little bit about some of the things that we are doing a little differently this year than what we've done in the past, given some of the information that we have as compared to the FORWARD. But we also, at the same time, this year, we are gonna be doing some very timely and targeted test prep, a little bit more than what we, because we've just, now that we know a little bit more about the test and what we have to do to prepare our kids, not about, hey, you're gonna see this, but about kind of mindset, that mindset of, of achievement, of I can do the best I can, as well as exhibiting some of that confidence to go along with it too as well. And it's the second time that our kids have seen this. So we're excited to see these, these plans go into play and continue to monitor and keep the board updated on some of the progress towards those goals as well.
Do we have a, do you guys have a feel for, you know, the, the, you know, kids that are, that are lower on, you know, reading or math or whatever, or the MAP scores? Is that, like, what, what percentage of that is because they don't know the content versus, you know, test anxiety, or, you know, they didn't care about the test because they could do it off, or?
That's a great question. I, I think.
Wish we knew the answer to that because.
And it's less of an issue at primary.
It's less of an issue at, at the, at the primary school than I would say that it is at the intermediate school.
Yeah. I think our, our job is to start, is to be in, to build that confidence when you sit down and take a test at, because the formant is naked and they see all year. And this is, they see it three times a year. It's not like it's a monthly thing. So that's, that's what we talked about this morning, made a great discussion with our coaches this morning about, about how you get kids ready for that. Not just plop them in front of a screen and say, okay, go at it. There's more to it than that. What do you see in daily versus what you're gonna see here? So Jay, Jay had a great idea about, you know, they read passages like this or pages. Here you get a passage. Now, what can you tell us about the questions and the content of that passage? But you have to be ready to understand, what skills will I use that I've learned for that? So it's that transfer of skill to assessment.
Yeah.
So I think it's, that's, I agree.
It was easy to say that, oh, we need to, you know, work more on multiplication or whatever, you know, whatever arbitrary skill, right? But that may not correlate as well as we would want if there are other issues.
Well, I, I guess, Phil, it'd be great if we knew multiplication was an issue. Because we don't.
Well, in math, you do, right?
But in math, not really. Yes, no, because we get into some, I guess so, yes, I guess according to that. But I guess what we would really wish, because we're used to, from a state assessment standpoint, this is really since the Badger and now the FORWARD, we used to give item analysis. That said, your kids are weak in multiplication, you're great in this, or you need more improvement. We're still kind of leaning on the state to sometime give us that, to be able to kind of help us guide our instruction and some of our critical decisions. But when we take a look at MAP, we do know, and sixty-fifth percentile is what we're really shooting for, and we know what that RIT score is. And that's really where, when we take a look at Jay's school, they know they have a gap. The kids who are below that, we need to accelerate that growth, get them over that, and at the same time, continuing to accelerate the ones above the sixty-fifth percentile. So I, I guess you're right, we would know what it takes to get to the sixty-fifth percentile because it's a RIT score. But remember, the RIT band is, is it's basically give us, oh, probably fifteen to twenty different skills. And there's not a specific one out of those fifteen that they're good or weak in. So.
Yeah.
It's, it's not as much a science as a mathematical equation, unfortunately, with the educational component of a kid. So there isn't a lot that goes into a RIT score. But I guess, Phil, to kind of answer your question, we did see a lot of our high achieving kids, especially at the seventh and eighth grade level, not all of a sudden show up as unproficient on the FORWARD score. That doesn't make sense. When your MAP is high, your F and P is high, and all of a sudden you're below basic. I think we've got an effort problem.
Yeah.
Right there. So, and we did see that a lot more than what we would have liked on the seventh and eighth grade. And that's really where, how do we create the mindset? This is important, and, and when do we place that? Is it before spring break or after spring break? I mean, when's the right time? Do you want kids to get, you want more content in compared to timeliness? Lot of those discussions.
So timing is really important because not only do we have the FORWARD exam in spring, they also have our final MAP exam, which is the third in a series of exams that are, that are very similar. So how do we space that appropriate, what's, what's the correct amount of time between when we do the MAP and the FORWARD, or the FORWARD and the MAP, whichever the?
F and E.
Whichever, however, and then there's an F and E test that goes on there too. So you get to May, late April, early May, and you're taking three standardized tests. Yay, which one am I gonna put my, all my eggs in which basket?
Well, they have the algebra.
So how do we, how do we make it that every time they see that they're taking, whether it's F and P or MAP or FORWARD exam, because those are the ones that were, that were kind of graded on, how do we say, that's when I'm gonna have to give my best effort? When is it, okay, I gave my best effort on that one, and I take a break on the next one and then give my next, you know? So that's, it's, it's how do you, how do you get that in a, in a teenage, teenager's head? That I have to give my best effort every single time that I'm taking an exam? So that's what we're working on.
Do we ever reach out to the other feeder schools who may have consistently performed better and are taking the same test? What are they doing, and what is their timing?
We haven't done that.
No, their, their, their timing last year was right around the same time as ours too as well. But we are taking a look at what assessments are most important, when do we do them? Some of them are dictated, like from, from an eighth grade standpoint, you're gonna take a Spanish placement exam, you're gonna take the algebra placement exam, you've got the MAP, you've got the F and P, and then you've got your FORWARD. And that doesn't, I haven't even touched. And that doesn't, I haven't even touched the, the ACP, which is in December, but I haven't even touched the, oh yeah, you've got a social studies assessment, you've got a science test, you've got this stuff too. So we do try to balance, and that's where you hear about, oh, we're assessing our kids all the time, that's why we're really trying to strike a balance. But we also want to make sure that there's those steps along the way so we're not surprised when they show up and all of a sudden, oh, I didn't know you didn't know that. So it's kind of that progression, so there is a fine mind and a fine balance too as well.
The algebra and Spanish, all those assessments are first place on the roadmap?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. For recommendation placements, correct. Yeah.
And we have to go over there to take, well, we don't, we, we're there for Spanish.
Spanish, yes.
Algebra one we can take here. But they have to do it all the same day. I mean, they have all their parameters for that, so that, you know, if I, if you take it first hour on Monday and I take it third hour on Wednesday, I'm going to talk to you so I can figure out what I'm supposed to really study for.
At the seven and eighth level, maybe the sixth level, would there be any merit to, as part of the motivational factor, sharing with them our performance versus the other feeders, reminding them that they're going to be going up against those kids in high school, knowing that they want to show how, you know, show their real proficiency?
Right, and I think we, we're going to take a look at that, and I know Jay's team is going to take a look at that. It would be great, but the best thing about F and P and math is we get the results just like that. For the forward, we have to wait till, I mean, in, in this, in this era in the society of instant gratification, you know, how did I do, how did I do, which our kids are, they, they want to know, which is great. I mean, a lot of them are like, how darned, I didn't, you know, my math score stayed the same, or I didn't meet my goal, or whatever it is. But is that motivational component? How do we continue to motivate them to, hey, look, look at the other schools, let's try to, you know, work our way up to, to be able to rival those guys? Because you are competing against those when you step into airway.
That's a great point.
I don't know if this sounds silly, but does the forward exam have to be taken?
Yes.
And it's mandatory at every grade level?
It is, yes, we are dictated by the Department of Public Instruction that, and actually it's a state law that kids need to be assessed every year in the area of mathematics and reading, in grades three through eight and grade ten.
Even though we are assessing them?
Correct. Correct. Yep. Some was hoping that math would become the state assessment because sixty-five per, sixty-five percent of the schools in the state of Wisconsin are using math, and it goes up even higher when you talk about an online growth assessment because math measures growth. And that was the intent, being part of this, of the state assessment task force for several years, that was our intent, to show something that is growth-oriented instead of achievement, so you can honor what work people have done with a child. But unfortunately, right now, due to money, basically, and there is no adaptive, it used to be adaptive, that word would go up and down based on a child's ability, we were told that the state couldn't fund that type of assessment. But yes, it is required by state law that we administer that. We do allow parents to opt out if in fact that is what they choose, though. We do have a, opt out. We don't block any of that.
But we're penalized for it?
Um, yes. Yep. Correct. You are penalized from a report card standpoint.
Their score is at being zero.
Okay. They are considered a zero. On the report card, it's not as heavy, but on the proficiency, when you see it in the paper.
Yes.
It is. So. Thanks, guys. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. I mean, Google Expeditions.
Sure, last time, Mary presented Google Expeditions, which basically is virtual field trips, and Mary has worked very closely with our staff to basically align where we can use this curricularly. The big thing is, is that we cannot use it below grade two. So unfortunately, our 4K, 5K, and, and who knows, maybe that will begin to change with possibly the amount of devices kids have and at their disposal too as well. So.
The grade two thing was an age recommendation?
Age recommendation.
From, from VR stuff.
Yep, from that too.
So it wasn't a device availability?
No, 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 no. It's just it's not recommended, or we choose to use that recommendation, I'm not quite sure that it's not.
I guess didn't have problem with it. Maybe walked into a few things. Don't do it while they're on the road, you're fine.
That's right. Try not to take them out there. But I guess Mary shared, shared presentation, the purchase is just under $10,000. We do have this, have the funds allocated in our fund ten budget, so just looking for a motion through board to approve the purchase of Google Expeditions.
Should we add that not to exceed $10,000 or is that?
Um, it's, we, we can't because I think the, it's all encompassing, the nine ninety-nine.
You should, plus tax?
No, we're just, yeah, I know. Correct.
And we get thirty units?
Correct. Yep. Okay, not to exceed $10,000. Sure.
Well, do we need to? I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of Google Expeditions. Al, second?
Motion in a second. Is there any other discussion?
I think it's a really neat idea.
Our staff's excited.
Yeah, I have reviews from a lot of single users, because apparently it doesn't need a single user device.
Yeah, you have to have a leader and a follower.
Yeah. Yeah, otherwise.
Good reviews.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Enjoy.
Enjoy. We will. Thank you.
Kids will.
And the student calendar?
Sure, just wanted to, again, last time we brought a draft, and I did receive one bit, I did take it to our, our parents, and I did get one piece of feedback, basically focused around the day before Memorial Day, which they were, they would like to have the day off of school based on some athletic participation that their children are part of, but that's all I heard. So the September fifth start date, what's that?
The day before Memorial Day?
Correct, yeah, there's, well, I'm sorry, Friday. I'm sorry, Friday. Yeah, they have, we'll give them off that day. But the Friday before Memorial Day, because in the past, as a conversation with Katie this morning, or this afternoon, that has been a day the last few years, at least two years, where it has been like a make-up snow day, and, but that is a little bit of change. And the reason for that change is the, basically taking a look at the idea of September first being the four Labor Day this year, and basically recap, recapturing that day on, on the twenty-fifth. So I guess just looking for a motion for, to approve the seventeen, eighteen student calendar as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand seventeen, eighteen student calendar as presented. Al, second?
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Fund balance usage.
Sure. The one thing from the facility team that is basically ready to, for, for a recommendation from the team would be the purchase of a new Bobcat to replace our nine fifty-five big tractor. John, the tractor's over twenty, about twenty years old?
We purchased it in nineteen ninety-five.
Nineteen ninety-five, so it's going on twenty-one, twenty-two years old. It's been well taken care of. The resale value on the device, on the piece of equipment is still very high, so we would be able to recoup some dollars, we would put it on an auction site, Wisconsin Surplus, I do believe.
Yeah.
Where it becomes an auction item, very similar to where we sold our playground equipment too as well. So we've, we've taken a look at the, the piece of equipment, the Bobcat five-six-hundred, and in the, in the quote, John and his team have worked to put together the pieces of equipment or the attachments, implements that are needed to operate what we need them to do, and that would be like a snowplow blade, the, the snow blower, as well as a, there's one other piece, wasn't there, gen, bucket? Oh, bucket and forklift, and the forks on it too as well. It's a very multipurpose vehicle, and we're, we're excited about the opportunity to use its functionality. Unfortunately, since we are looking at a Bobcat, I know Amy, you were, you asked, hey, do you want to look at a different tractor? The functionality of having this piece of equipment, it's like, you're moving into almost like a pickup truck type of mentality, where you have a bucket in the back, where you can put stuff, you still got the front-end loader, just like a tractor does everything that our tractor does, but more, in some of those functionality components. There is only, given their, the way Bobcats sell, very similar to other large pieces of equipment like John Deere's and things, only one dealer you can work with, and once they put the price in, you get all the government discounts, it's not that we, like we can go shop around for that. John did, however, contact one of his two other dealers, share the quote with them to make, making sure that, hey, this is still accurate, this is the same price you would give us, and they, they did say, yes, this is, this is the same deal that we would be able to offer you. Randy did some research on, on possibly buying a used piece of equipment, so I've been talking to some midstates out in Watertown as well as Prairie du Sac, and it seems like we can purchase a brand-new Bobcat with everything we would like on it for about fifty thousand eight hundred dollars. The used piece of equipment, after one year old, about three hundred, three hundred-plus hours, and all the attachments would be right around forty-six thousand four hundred dollars. So it's, it'd only be a saving of about four thousand three hundred dollars. Now, you also lose a year warranty on the piece of equipment as well. We did look into getting the government discount on the attachments, buy the used piece of equipment, and then get the attachments at a discounted price. Unfortunately, Bobcat does not do that, only if you purchase a new piece of equipment, and that was confirmed by two different dealers too as well. So I guess we've done a lot of research and homework on the, on the piece of equipment, making sure that we are getting the best price as possible. And when we took a look at the functionality of this piece of equipment versus purchasing another John Deere tractor, which would be close to that, that forty-two, forty-three thousand because it is the bigger one, with the more horsepower, and that horsepower basically is used to blow snow when we go, obviously, on our campus, but ultimately up near Woodland Ridge as well as Bar River Crossing as well too. So, so and given the season that we're about ready to enter, the winter season, the facility team felt it was a good time to make that recommendation for purchase and using fund balance to purchase the piece of equipment.
So your intent is to purchase the new piece of equipment or to pursue the used stuff? Because the used didn't have the hydraulics.
Didn't have the high-speed hydraulic. The high-speed hydraulics, which, given our research, we're okay with because it's, we, you just can't move as fast and you can't throw as far around, but go into a ton. The, the really hydraulic piece there is to, like, if you needed to move snow into, like, say, a dump truck, to really start to move it, or you needed to push it several feet, you know, tens and dozens of feet, for what we're looking for, it would be appropriate. However, I'm talking to Randy and Dee, the forty-three hundred dollars we would save really isn't worth it from a new standpoint, as well as the warranty component, it just didn't seem to, that plus and minus the forty-three hundred dollars seemed to make more sense to spend it on the brand new piece of equipment, get the three-year warranty, and then you get the brand new piece of equipment.
I, I normally buy nothing new as far as expensive equipment, but in this case, four thousand dollars difference, and it's because of the government discount. You know, they're, they're selling resale to the public market, and when you buy new, you're, you're getting the government discount, which you can't get on used equipment.
Right. And the piece of used equipment came from government entities, such as townships, school districts, and things like that too as well. So.
The thing is, it's, it's a unique piece of equipment, unfortunately. Bobcat's the only one that makes this type of, this type, they have a piece of equipment, so you can't look at a John Deere comparison or a, you know, a Volvo or whatever. They make tractors, this is really kind of a, it's like a four-wheeler on the stairways with all kinds of fun attachments.
Is that a pretty good assessment, John?
So it's going to be a good Christmas for John as well.
Sorry. There's a couple people with some smiles on their faces. And then the other piece is, is we are able to rent pieces of equipment, like the slit cedar and a fertilizer or anything else like that from local vendors as well too, and there's several local vendors that we can use as service maintenance type of equipment too as well, so.
So in, in terms of maintenance, there's a relatively local dealer that does maintenance and that sort of stuff, just like?
Yeah. Yeah, we've got one in Slinger, we've got one in Butler, Watertown.
Yep.
And, and like the one in Slinger, we've already got a prior relationship with too as well, given some other pieces of equipment that we use too. So Phil, to, to answer your question, leading up to today, we didn't know if we'd be able to gather those questions, and the recommendation would have been not to exceed fifty thousand eight hundred and thirty or whatever it was. But at this point, it just seems like the best buy would be just to, to purchase the piece of equipment outright for fifty thousand eight hundred and five dollars.
Is it available now?
Yes, it is. It is available now. And they did come out, they brought it out, Randy and Dee, as part of the facility committee ones, they took a look at it too as well.
Does it look nice?
It's a cool piece of.
It'll look a little rusty.
I can clean my driveway and probably know two minutes.
So looking for a motion to approve the purchase of a Bobcat five-six-hundred and the appropriate attachments, not to exceed fifty thousand eight hundred and five dollars.
I make a motion to purchase the Bobcat five-six-hundred with the attachments, not to exceed fifty thousand eight hundred and five dollars. Al, second?
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
I want to go for a spin.
Thank you.
Come on over.
We don't fit in.[1710.25]